To order on this Monday, May 5th, 2025. Welcome, everyone. Glad to see everyone here. If you would be so kind as to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, you've sent your Son among us to proclaim the kingdom of God in cities, towns, villages, and lonely places. Behold and visit, we pray, the city and county of Lee County and Sanford and its neighboring communities. Renew the bonds of charity that uphold our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Deliver us from poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with mercy. And at last, bring us to your holy city where we shall know perfect unity and peace through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda in front of you. Two items we need to remove from old business. Item 5A. We will not be discussing that this evening. That's item 5A. And we will not have a closed session this evening. And there will be some comments from the manager. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Can I move 5B to the consent agenda?
Move 5B to the consent agenda.
I don't know about that one because you have to give the two votes.
Okay.
Yes, that's two votes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Can I move both votes? No, I'm just kidding.
Maybe you said the public ones.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that guidance. Any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved agenda as amended.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You have the consent agenda in front of you. Are there any additions, deletions to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have public comments. No one signed up. Moving on. We do have a presentation from the renew presentation from Autumn Smith and Emma Buck. I was trying to remember which classical artist that was. Thank you, Emma.
All right. Well, good evening, and I wanted to thank the commissioners for allowing me to have a few minutes to present an update for the renew programming that is coming out of Community Support Services. So just a reminder, the renew programming was established in 2024, and it assists individuals in the community with mental and behavioral health needs. As I said, it is based out of the Community Support Services Department, and it has three initiatives currently. The behavioral health, the opioid use disorder reduction, and the reentry initiatives. The first, then, what covers the behavioral health reimbursement initiative. And what you have in the slides is a breakdown of the nonprofits and the mental health providers that we have contracted with on a reimbursement basis. And this is for January to December of 2024. So it's the calendar year. And it breaks down how much we reimbursed each nonprofit or mental health provider. And at the bottom, to me, the important part to look at is that in this initiative for that year, we served 140 community members, and the total reimbursement was over $76,000. The next slide is going to show the services reimbursed. And you can take a look at that, and I can answer any questions at the end if you have any. The one thing I would point out is the 14.7% for mental health and clinical sessions. That is the programming that was reimbursed to our contracted mental health providers. So that is not, there are no nonprofits in that orange category. So that is strictly for contracted services. There, if you look in the purple, it says rehab, drug assessment, and physicals. That is programming that often a rehab facility may require an assessment, which is similar to the clinical sessions prior to admittance. But those were paid for by the nonprofits, and then we reimburse them. So that's the behavioral health mental service part that I wanted to present. The next initiative that we've been working on is the reentry council. In 2024, 85 individuals were served through our reentry council. The important thing to point out with that is our, we received the grant from Department of Adult Corrections at the end of the summer in August timeframe. But this number, 85, these were already, a large percentage were being serviced with our reentry programming before we even received the grant. We had been working reentry services for several years in conjunction with the pretrial program. So really, that grant that we received with Chatham County was just to solidify programming that we were already doing. We have a case manager that strictly works with our reentry program. And then we also have Ms. Brayboy, who manages both reentry and pretrial services. And her and Nicola Callaway, they both attended several trainings throughout the year since we received this grant, the end of last year and the beginning of this year, to provide the best services possible and also to be able to go into the prisons by doing custodial training and work with the individuals before they are released back into the community. And very quickly, before I turn it over to Emma for the opioid reduction initiative, the success story that reentry asked me to share was about a Lee County resident who has served 11 years in federal prison and was connected with our local reentry council. Through working with the reentry team, he was linked with educational and employment opportunities. He completed the forklift class at Central Carolina Community College with a scholarship that they found him through the food bank of central and eastern North Carolina. He is now gainfully employed and continues to attend his meetings with the reentry staff. And through the reentry sponsorship, they were able to purchase his clothing that he needed before he started his job. So a lot of the jobs that we, employers we work with, there's actually either items needed such as tools or clothing, protective clothing, steel toe boots, items like that that with this reentry grant, we're able to purchase at the beginning so that they will have what they need to start their jobs. So I'm going to turn it over to Emma.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. So I'm going to touch a little bit on our opioid reduction initiative. So there are a few bullet points up there. Just to remind everyone, between 2022 and 2028, we are going to be receiving a little under $8 million. That could be subjected to change as more settlement money comes in, but that is what we currently know we will be receiving. By the end of this fiscal year, we will have received up to date about $2.5 million. And then obviously, the rest moving forward. So just some qualitative data moving forward that we have done up to date. We have extended partnerships for medication for opioid use disorder. That is what MOD stands for, to justice-involved individuals. The settlement funds have also gone to fund a UNC lead for North Carolina fellow position, which is myself, with increased transportation through COLTS, enter into MOUs with eligible MOD providers to help with reimbursement as they see fit, increase community engagement via social media, and updates to the renew page of the Lee County website. We, in partnership with the Enrichment Center, supplied Detera drug deactivation bags to help with safe medication disposal. And then we also welcomed a behavioral mental health clinician to our team. So as we look forward into the future, just a few things to highlight. We are currently continuing our ongoing data collection, which I will touch on in a second as we begin to report back to the state in July, the progress we have made. We are also exploring drug treatment court options and what that looks like. And then we are currently in the process, very soon, of announcing the date for our open community event, which will be open to all community members to attend. So kind of touching back on medication for opioid use disorder. In January of this year, Lee County entered into contracts with opioid treatment providers, OTPs, to provide MOD medication for opioid use disorder. This number you see on your screen, this $25,000, is from Sanford Treatment Center. We started our contract with them January 27th, and this is everything that we have received up to date from them. So these are the goals that are outlined in our strategic plan as we kind of move forward, and by 2028, these are the goals we hope to achieve. So by 2028, our first one is looking at decreasing the rate of overdose deaths by 20%. We hope to decrease the number of emergency department visits for overdose by 20%. And we hope to decrease the opioid-related overdose response call by 15%. And then we hope to decrease opioid-related justice-involved individuals by at least 10%. So just to kind of provide you guys with some updates on those data, on those data points, our overdose deaths from 2021 to 2023 has seen an 8.3% decrease. The data is not yet confirmed for 2024. This information comes from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So we wait for them to confirm the data and send it to us. For emergency department visits, we have seen a 52.8% decrease. Obviously, in 2021, there were 142 emergency department visits for overdose, and then in 2024, there were only 67. And then these two data points are reflected in decreasing the number of justice-involved individuals. So death by distribution charge first came into effect in December of 2023. So that's why there's only three numbers reflected on the screen. It was only around for a month, but in 2024, no individuals were charged with death by distribution. Opioid-related arrests have seen a 65.3% increase. So from 2021, there was 75 individuals, and then in 2024, there were 124. This number does not include the death by distribution charge. And then finally, our last statistic we're going to look at is EMS overdose response call rates have seen almost a 60% decrease. In 2021, there were 376 calls, and then in 2024, there were 153. So that is all that we have. If anyone has any questions, I will help with Autumn.
Okay. Questions for Emma? Commissioner Sharp?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbek?
I would say, what do you, out of some of the statistics and stuff that you've provided, what, what do you believe, what are you seeing, I guess trend-wise, that might be contributing to some of these larger decreases? Is it jobs coming onto the market? Is it the help with the nonprofits on the, in the jail before they're getting released? I mean, are you seeing some trends now? I mean, I know it's too early to even speculate on those types of things, but are you seeing things that are working, I guess?
Sure. So the biggest reasoning for some of the trends that we're seeing with the opioid numbers is the distribution and availability of Narcan. That's why the EMS calls are reducing. And this is not something that's just the Lee County, it's state and nationwide, that because there is an understanding of how Narcan works, it's more accessible, that that is really what is fueling the reduction in the overdose death and also reaching out to EMS. I do think that there is often a concern with contacting 911, especially if somebody's justice involved with an overdose and having a secondary charge or concern about, about that. So I, I think that the Narcan has been essential for, for that demographic. But I will say that for, I believe, our community, a lot of it has been bringing all of, or as many community partners as we can together and having everybody rowing the boat in the same direction to, to simplify it. We have like great support with the jail, the sheriff's department, the cities involved with, with a lot. So I, I think there are several things that, that are happening. But I would say also having the support for individuals coming back out of incarceration because one of the groups that has not had a decrease nationwide is in overdose death is individuals reentering from incarceration. They have actually been the sole group that has increased over the last year in their deaths. So, you know, in our community, partners with the jail and reentry is vital to getting that information out when they're reentering.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner, connect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, but just a comment. Thank you first off for the detailed report. And even though we have to hear these numbers and stuff, I'm, I'm thankful that with us getting in on the opioid settlement, that we use our monies wisely, and it is helping people. So that's nice to see. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Martin?
Emma, how much longer do we have you with us?
So my fellowship ends June 30th.
We will miss you. It's been great having you here.
Yes, thank you all.
Yeah. Just, just a comment of recognition for the relief that this work does in EMS and, you know, the emergency room. So, thank you.
I have some questions. First off, who's our behavioral health clinician?
Rolanda Jones?
Rolanda Jones.
Yes, sir. She came on in December.
I don't know if I've met her. Okay. Now, the statistics on the monetary aspect of it, because we are getting ready for budget season and budget starts one July till 30 June, is this fiscal year or calendar year, the numbers on here?
The numbers on there are calendar year because the program started in January. But I do have the remaining up through this March of the balances that are left from where we started.
Will we be reporting this on a calendar or a fiscal year?
Once we get enough data, we'll start reporting on this week.
Okay. And I just want to commend you on the work that you've presented us. It was very refreshing to see changes in the numbers and also the fact that... Is Christie Brayboy here? She's not here. Just wanted to let you know that they participated in the Resource Career Fair at the correctional facility here in Sanford. And so it was very positive to see the community and a number of organizations interacting with individuals who are preparing to leave. As many of them are not from Lee County, our staff was willing to tell them that we're going to coordinate with where you're going so that you can get a, a warm handoff to the next community. So I have nothing further. I want to say thank you very much. Very informative.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Trillium Health Resources Annual Report. We have Cecilia Peers. I saw Ann Kimball came in here. Hi, Ann.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me in, and I'll go ahead and get started as the slides get pulled up. So just a reminder, Trillium Health Resources is one of four tailored plans and local management entity managed care organizations in North Carolina. So we cover services for Medicaid members who have the most significant mental health, substance use, developmental disabilities, and traumatic brain injury needs. We also cover behavioral health services for people who have no insurance or are underinsured. So we cover about 25 to 30% of Medicaid recipients in any given county with other commercial health plans covering around 70 to 75% of Medicaid recipients. And just to introduce myself, I am Cecilia Peers. I am the Regional Vice President for Trillium, and I'll tell you a little bit more about the regions in the report. Some of the things in here, it's, it's a little bit meaty, so I'm going to go pretty quickly. Some of the things in here are more for information and things that I've shared in that mid-year update that I provided a few months ago. So just a reminder of our mission. Trillium's mission is transforming lives and building community well-being through partnerships and proven solutions. So a couple key pieces to that are partnerships. We are partners, and we consider ourselves partners with our members, providers, with elected leadership, with county service departments, and community resource providers. They're all our partners, and all of us are necessary to improve the lives of members. And then also, proven solutions are extremely important to us. We always strive to offer services that are a best practice for our members, especially with their unique needs and high levels of care, and also working with providers to maintain fidelity to the models of care that they're offering. So after consolidating early last year in 2024, Trillium now serves 46 counties. We are, in terms of the number of counties and the number of tailored plan members, the largest of those four tailored plans. So in our catchment area, there are approximately 3.1 million people. If you compare us to the next tailored plan over in the pink, which is Alliance, they have six counties, and their catchment area has about 3.5 million people. So that really lends our work to a different approach to providing services to our members and working with our providers. We have to take a different approach to working in many rural counties where our members are spread out versus some more highly concentrated areas where other tailored plans are, are serving. And you'll see here a breakdown of our members, around 51,000 are tailored plan members. Still, the majority of members who have Medicaid are part of that Medicaid direct system, mainly because people have Medicare as their primary health insurance, and then we're covering the behavioral health. So they're carved out of that managed care process. And we're still serving a significant number of uninsured individuals throughout our catchment area. So local connections are really important to us. We take our role as a local management entity very seriously because, as I mentioned, you know, the unique needs of our counties and our members really drive services. So what we did when we consolidated is to establish five regions so that we can focus on smaller groups of counties and counties that are nearby or naturally aligned with each other. Each region has a regional advisory board, and that board is made up of a county commissioner and an appointed member of the community for each county. We also have a consumer and family advisory committee for each region, and that consumer and family advisory committee has individuals who are either recipients of behavioral health services or are individuals who support recipients or support our members in receiving services. And that really allows us to hear from people who are directly involved in receiving care and navigating our system so that we can understand whether, whether that's working or whether we need to make changes. We also have staff that are involved in local initiatives, in local collaborative meetings and events, and so I'll kind of talk about who represents us here. That's really important so that we understand what's happening in counties, how our systems and programs like Renew are working to help individuals in the community, how we can partner with those projects and make accessing services easier. So many thanks to Commissioner Smith for serving on our regional advisory board, and also Sanford City Council member Walter Ferguson is our other appointed member. We do have one member from Lee County on our CFAC representing intellectual and developmental disabilities. And so we welcome individuals who would represent the mental health population, the substance use population, or the traumatic brain injury population to our CFAC, if you have anyone in mind or if anybody's watching and interested in joining. Then I'm your regional vice president, and Ann Kimball is our Director of Community Engagement and Empowerment. And so we're involved in, in your local community committees and, and events. So if there are any events where Trillium needs to share information to the community about accessing care, we, we'd love to do that. So just a little bit about numbers and our revenue for fiscal year 24. We had a revenue of a little over 1.2 billion. As you can see, that, that big dark green section is our Medicaid revenue, and so those go right out for services for members when we receive them. We meet the state's requirement for a risk reserve. We also receive funding for those uninsured or underinsured members to get behavioral health services, and so those are the state services revenue that you see there at about 10.4%. And then counties and other funding sources like SAMSA grants and some other block grants, further fund initiatives that are not covered through Medicaid billable services, and that accounts for a little over half a percentage of our budget. And we do receive a little under 12% for administrative costs, and that's really the staff needed to manage our two contracts with the Department of Health and Human Services to administer Medicaid and those state funds. So we're shifting kind of the, the numbers to look at what's been happening with Trillium since tailored plan launch, which happened in July of this year, or July of 2024, sorry. July of this year hasn't happened yet. So since July, since we launched our whole person care, we've served around 80,000 individuals, and you'll see the breakdown with mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. The, the majority of those, 63%, are individuals primarily with a, a mental health concern or disorder. And then our service claims totaled around 802 million. So that is just funding that we received or paid out directly for services delivered. That does not include some of those special grants and programs that help with things like residential treatment, help with juvenile justice initiatives, and other systems-level initiatives that, that support overall wellness in our communities. And so I, I won't go through this too much, but we have gone through a process of Medicaid transformation. We are essentially on the, from the state's perspective, we're at the end of phase two, moving into phase three. The state has contracted with Blue Cross and Blue Shield to have a statewide child and family specialty plan that will serve the foster care population. So it's one plan that offers all of the benefits, both basic and enhanced. So what's being offered by standard plans as well as what's being offered by tailored plans specifically for that foster care population so that it reduces barriers to those children getting access to care. And then it will also cover the families of those kids so that the whole family can be covered with care. So we wanted to just provide an updated recap of Medicaid enrollment, and this is for our 46 counties. So in our catchment area, Trillium is serving around 28% of the Medicaid population, whereas standard plans, those health plans that cover a, the population who receives Medicaid but has mild to moderate behavioral health needs, they're around 72% of our catchment area. So we're covering around 28% of Medicaid recipients, and around 8% are those who... percent are those who receive that whole-person care through the tailored plan. Then your largest, in terms of our catchment area, the largest standard plan provider is Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So getting to some Medicaid enrollment numbers in Lee County, total Medicaid enrollment is approximately nineteen thousand. That changes from month to month. People move between plans, move insurances, and so we're covering around twenty-four percent of the Medicaid population here with those standard plans, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, United Healthcare, WellCare, AmeriHealth, and Carolina Complete, covering seventy-six percent. A big shift between what's happening in our catchment and what's happening here is WellCare is covering around nineteen percent of your Medicaid members, and Carolina Complete is close behind at eighteen percent. So those are your two largest standard plans. And members move between standard plan and tailored plan based on their needs. So when they're identified as having a higher level of care need and they're in a standard plan, they can request from that plan to move to us so that they have those additional benefits that we cover that standard plans aren't covering. So I'd love to talk about some of the projects and initiatives that we have had over the last year and are working towards throughout the year. One of the things that we initiated this year is the expansion of the service called Child First. It's a zero-to-five early intervention, and it helps support children and families when a child is diagnosed with a disability. It really helps families learn how to navigate the service system, learn how to navigate challenging behaviors, and how that interacts with family dynamics with the goal that out-of-home placement for a child is reduced, and also future Department of Justice, Juvenile Justice engagement is down as well. We want to keep the family intact and healthy. We want to help kids be prepared for going to school, even with accommodation needs, and we want to keep them out of the justice system. We also continue to offer training, so you'll see here a picture from a CIT training. We also offer a suicide prevention training called Question, Persuade, Refer. We offer mental health first aid training and community crisis intervention training, which is like CIT but for laypeople. Anyone in the community can take that training, and we're actually working with a local organization to offer that here soon, so I'm excited about that. We've partnered with the state to offer a health recovery app that members can connect with through their substance use or behavioral health provider, and it's just an extra level of support like you would use any other app. You can include your recovery plan, find nearby meetings, get encouraging words of encouragement, and reach out for support if someone's thinking that they're going to experience a slip in their recovery. We also partner with Victory Junction to offer family weekends at their inclusive camp in the spring and the fall. So our spring weekends just ended for families, and we'll have some in the fall as well. And then you'll see we had a demonstration of our TULA, Trillium Ultimate Living Assistant, and that's technology that's designed to keep people stable in their homes and improve their activities of daily living. We want our members to be able to fully integrate in the community to their best of their ability, and so this is a piece of technology that helps them do that. And then in terms of members that Trillium has served in Lee County, just between July and December of last year, it's a little over eleven hundred members. There is duplication between some of the categories because people with mental health also use substance use services, people with ADD also use mental health services. So you'll see the totals there, and the value of services provided to those individuals was a little over ten million dollars. Fifty-seven percent of the individuals that were served are being treated for mental health conditions. You'll see, trying to read the number, I think it's around twenty-seven percent for substance use and twenty-two for ADD. And then just to make sure that people can access service through Trillium when they need it, our member and recipient service line is available Monday through Saturday, seven AM to six PM. That line is answered by real people who will answer questions and get our members or new members connected to the department that they need to be connected to. We also have a behavioral health crisis line that operates twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. So if someone's experiencing a behavioral health crisis, they can call that line and get clinical support. The person will assess the situation, try to de-escalate things, and then connect the member to resources to help them get stabilized. And that's it for me, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Cecilia. Questions for Cecilia? Commissioner Martin?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovett?
No questions, but thank you so much.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Borbeck?
I just have two questions. One of them, is there any way to get any type of like age or demographic-type info? Like, I'm going to use the slide, the two slides ago, the fifty-seven percent of members served in Lee County. I mean, is that from birth to a hundred-and-twelve, or is that, does that make sense?
It is, and the state has a, the state has a dashboard that gives you information about age for all Medicaid members in North Carolina, and you can filter it. So I'm happy to send out that link to the specific dashboard that has those numbers for you.
I think it'd be interesting to see if there's a trend in there and if we can maybe work with Renew to try and start targeting, like, you know, an overlapping type.
Yeah.
Can we do it together kind of thing?
That would be great. Yeah, good question.
And then the second question I have is that on behavioral health crisis line, I feel like we were in a meeting that no matter if they're a member, they can call this number, correct?
That is correct. We won't necessarily know what services someone will be eligible for if they're calling and they're insured by someone else, but Mobile Crisis as a service is insurance-blind, so if someone's experiencing a behavioral health crisis, we can always connect them to Mobile Crisis as a service, and we can help them just, you know, figure out that next step. So we will respond to anyone on that one.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that the general population knew that, just in case.
And also, nine-eight-eight is an easy number to remember, and they will also, they connect with us fairly frequently, and they'll connect with local services as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you. I've got a question regarding service here in Lee County. Do you assign an individual or group to work with all of Lee County, or how does that work?
So depending on the service that individuals receive, we do have a service called Tailored Care Management where individuals can either choose to work with a care manager that is, that's with Trillium, or a care manager that is based with a provider. So members can choose between an outside provider such as Daymark or the Ark of North Carolina, or they can choose Trillium as their care management provider.
And is that covered with them when you initiate the contact, or?
It is. So each year, when someone becomes a new member with us, they are mailed a member packet with their card, and that includes information about how to find providers within our network, and it also, if they're eligible for that care management service, it includes information about how to access that service. And our care management team or our member services team will reach out and see if they're interested in that service, if they're not already enrolled, and then we'll figure out whether they want to have care management with Trillium or with another provider. So they'll have options.
And who makes that determination on whether or not the person requesting the services is capable of carrying out the functions sometimes needed? For example, I've seen on the news many times people describe what the individual is going through, and it sort of hypes up law enforcement and some of the family members. So do you have a person that you assign that responsibility to, or how does that work?
So I probably would need maybe a little more detail, but in general, we-
I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
If you have, if you're working with a family and you're subject to have an individual constantly getting off their medication, is there a profile on that individual that someone in the household will have access to, or?
Only if the, if the member is their own guardian, then the member chooses what information other support folks have access to. If the member has a guardian, like a family member who's taking care of their care, then that person will have access to their information, and we have that information on file so that we know who is their own guardian versus who has an outside guardian for extra support.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
No, thank you.
I just have one question, and this reflects on Sanford City Sergeant Scott Hare with the Sanford Police Department. We were interacting the other day. He mentioned that there's a rescheduled CIT, the advanced course. Do we have a date on that yet?
I don't have a date on that, but I'm happy to get that for you.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, no further questions. Want to say thank you very much. Please drive safely back to Wilmington. Next item on the agenda is Mr. John Helix Group. Yes, sir. I got Haley's name on here. John Keener, thank you.
John Keener, not Haley, but I appreciate Ms. Haley's help very much.
Is Jason, is Jason here?
My partner, Jason Rappus here as well. And we appreciate the time. We won't take up much of it, but we're just answering Commissioner Smith, his invitation to come and just introduce who we are and what we've done here in the Triangle. We're Helix Ventures. We are very local. Both Jay and I live and raise our families here. I've done all my professional career here and all my growing up since I was about three in the Triangle. So love North Carolina, love being here, and love doing what we do, which is to expand really jobs and opportunities in this state. What we focused on primarily is the development of life science and advanced manufacturing parks, and just wanted to talk a little bit about what we've been able to do with Holly Springs and how that's transitioned over to what we've been able to do here at the Brickyard and the Kewa Kirin project that's growing now, give you a quick update on that, talk a little bit about our partnership with the Northview Deep River Optimist Club in conjunction with that park, and otherwise just shake your hand and say thank you for welcoming us into Lee County. We love being here, working here, and doing what we've done so far. So with that, as I mentioned, Helix, we're a preferred development partner really in the state for economic development projects. All our principals live, work, and raise their families here, and we have more than sixty years of experience developing real estate right here in North Carolina. Been all over the place, and there really isn't anywhere better to do this. And what we've found is partnerships with the state bringing in economic development projects has really been where we've had the biggest impact on growing opportunities, growing jobs in the markets that we work in, live, and care about, which is essentially right up and down US One. We've been very lucky to partner with and develop experience with some of the best partners that you can have, in particular in life science industry. Our first park up in Holly Springs started off with Jay and I being asked by Holly Springs to try to figure out a problem they had with Duke Energy to get some land to really try to get someone else to come in after Novartis. Now CSL Securis had come to really support the growing industry there. We worked through things with Duke Energy, and were able to bring in Fujifilm just before the pandemic, and that thankfully, that experience helped Amgen believe in our region, in our market, and they joined us at a next park before we brought one of their other partners, Kewa Kirin, to join us here in Sanford and really get a signature project for Lee County on the life science side to grow with the note that was always here with Pfizer and Elias, a long-term commitment to this town. It was very easy to tell these companies, hey, we have the experience to deliver you to a municipality and a county that wants you there and knows how to take care of life science industry. So we'd love to build on the legacy of makers that we have here in Lee County, and it's being very well-received by the industry that we work with. We work with pharmaceutical companies, cell and gene therapy companies too, but not just that. Advanced manufacturing companies, whether it be bearings to EV solutions, to sustainable energy like solar panels and other items. We deal with a lot of different industries up and down the spectrum and think the healthiest economies that we have are ones that have very diverse industry bases, and we like being involved with that. Helix in particular, we offer a full Bevy solution, really just to take the headaches out of the process for a lot of these companies. Like Kewa, they know rare disease and cell and gene therapies very, very well, but they don't really spend a lot of time putting pipes into the ground to feed those buildings that they need to create and manufacture life-saving drugs they do. That's where we come in. We partner with municipalities. Ms. Mentor, the commissioners here, and Amy right behind me knows me very well from the work that we've done with their staff at Sanford to really roll out the welcome mat for these lifesaving companies that create jobs that are very transformational for our local community, and that's what we like to do. Why are we here? Really, a new manufacturing triangle has grown up here to support the science triangle that was created back in the sixties, and it's really that base in science and with, mixed with the skill and the manufacturing base that has been here for more than a hundred years, has found really a new way to grow and create value in the communities that we work in. And because we live in this community too, we want to be right in the middle of it, and that's where we've chosen to make the major investments that we have, and we've been very lucky that the companies have seen that value too. And thanks to the work by a lot of people in this room, we've been able to create one major park and one major destination and are hopefully working on another one as it comes through to take advantage of really the skill that's here as well as the desire for companies to be here as well. And why would they like to be here? The state overall, best state for business, more times running than I can remember right now, and the talent that's here. We have major universities, the community college system, Dr. Chapman's behind me, I apologize, she's heard this a lot before, but really the support from that as well as from Fort Bragg and the quality, the quality of the veterans coming out of Fort Bragg too, and the talent and the discipline that they've developed in the service and the different resources they have for education to more fully develop that for the workforce really makes Sanford a unique location for taking care of these companies, and it's a place they want to be. That's what they need the most. So really, the purpose of our developments is to be designed to be the best-located and fully amenitized manufacturing campuses. These campuses aren't just boxes on the hills. We're not just putting fences and blocking things up. We're creating amenities for the whole community to enjoy. And one of the things I'd like to talk about a little tonight is about how much infrastructure these companies come in and invest in that's not just for their buildings, but the whole community can enjoy around it. And why, they're much larger than just the jobs they are or the building that they're in. They become, like Amgen and Fujia's become for Holly Springs, integral parts of their community that invest their time, their employees' energy, as well as in the infrastructure that we all enjoy as our community grows. And our job is really to help them attract and retain world-class talent, which means in a very simple way, try to create new jobs that everybody in our community can benefit from. So what do some of these projects look like? This is our first project in Holly Springs. We're immediately adjacent to the Twelve Oaks Residential Community. It's more than twelve hundred homes directly across the street from what will turn into a hundred-and-fifty-acre, fifteen-hundred-job campus for Fujifilm Diocent that's going in right now. What we try to do is those amenities you see up front. We created a fifty-thousand-square-foot retail space where before it was a former dirt track and problem. Cleaned that up and created something that not just the employees behind can enjoy, but all the residents can spend time there, families can meet and enjoy the amenities of the green space on the backyard, as well as take advantage of the hotel that we hope to bring there as well. The retail is opening next month, so I encourage you to come and take a look at what has been put together in Holly Springs as hopefully a springboard for what we'd like to do here at the Brickyard in particular in Sanford. Moving next to where we were able to put together additional acreage right along US One where Amgen created their new home. You see, obviously, the white buildings are more the manufacturing structures, but what's wrapped around them is multifamily, retail, additional office, as well as various parks and amenities around some natural lakes that you see down there at the bottom. Really, it's just a very big pond with very nice fish that my children enjoy catching on the weekends now, but we like to- But we like to preserve as much of that natural area as we can because one, the companies very much respect it. But two, it makes it really easy to create a fully amenitized walking path and connectivity where employees can come out of the buildings and walk to the restaurant, walk to food truck rodeo, walk to some of the athletic fields and without ever having to step on the street if we preserve some of those natural amenities. And we've been lucky to find sites that have ones that are beautiful in their own right. It allows us to do more of what we have and it's been very well received by the community. In addition to those, these companies help us bring in federal and state dollars to create major improvements, in particular along US-1 with NC DOT. And we can help communities attract these type of companies, but not have to do the heavy lift on most of your major projects like that. These companies, when we get the companies of the quality and the size that we have here, really help those communities make the lift and bring in the state and federal dollars that are game-changing for the infrastructure the community needs already. In particular, we also partner directly with municipality when there's, when there's holes and don't quite fill the gaps in. We've stepped up in this project in particular to help create a regional pump station, not just for our project, which was about 400 to 500 acres at this point, but to help drain almost 1,000 acres in this area, which opened up water and sewer availability to folks who never had it, only had a well that often dried out. But also opens up for residential opportunities and other things, again, without the municipality having to do the full lift for everything here. That's what these projects on the commercial side help do for the community. And I think that's, that's often lost and why I appreciate having the opportunity to highlight some of those things here. But probably don't want to listen to me the entire time. It's easier to just kind of visually show what we hope to have at Camp Helix here in Holly Springs and this transitions into what we are working on creating here in Sanford at the Brickyard. As you can see from the reason, we're rich in labor in Lee County in particular though. There's still 5,000 Lee County residents that leave Lee County to work every day. We'd like to create a park like this that helps them stay with great quality jobs here in Lee County. But this is why we're all here. The science, the, the institutions of learning, creating those additional jobs make it a great place to come back and work. Back when I was here, originally, most folks after we graduated, we left. Now, most people are coming here to try to get positions at different universities so they can come and stay and have a leg up and staying in our community. And that's a big polar shift thanks to, thanks to projects and companies like this that are coming in. These are just some of the buildings that we've created as sample and spec buildings that we'll work in. These are some of the biomanufacturing labs that will invariably go inside them. And this shows some of the mixed-use areas and the amenities that we hope to create around them that the community can enjoy as well. Creating housing adjacent to these companies allows them to bring new employees and have a, a soft landing pad to start and find out where they want to really be in the community and still enjoy some of the amenities right out the door with the community around them as well. Additional boardwalks and moving paths. Again, the footpath and the interconnectivity without having the vehicles is very important. It gives a totally different feeling to most of the parks that some of us would have been in. Giant, giant parking lots are not something that we do terribly well. And we prefer to preserve the large buffers around because you can create spaces like this that people enjoy walking in and traveling through. Creates a much better environment for those within the park as well as those on the border of the park too. And we try to be very sensitive to that with the infrastructure that we work with the state to invest in. So enough about Holly Springs because we'd rather be here in Sanford. But this is the Brickyard. We've been working here about four years on this project, fully, fully zoned about three years ago to create this light industrial park that wasn't there before. Obviously you can, you guys know very well the connectivity. We're directly across the street from Pfizer and on the former Lee Brick and Tile site where they had essentially a clay mine and a kiln that put them in a bad spot as it was developed in 2008. We were thrilled to be able to talk with the family and really help them out of a situation where it allowed Lee Brick and Tile to continue to grow as well as to create an asset for the community here. And some of the highlights here, we have about 900 acres, 75 of which Kewa Kirin has taken and they have a 20-year development plan. These parks aren't things that happen overnight, certainly. They happen in major phases. Kewa Kirin invested to have 75 acres to grow their company for 20 years. It's the first manufacturing facility they've ever built outside of Japan. And they chose to build it right here in Lee County. So we were, we were flattered, but we feel like we found exactly the kind of community member that Sanford deserved and Sanford wanted. We saw that from the groundbreaking on and we hope to attract more companies just like Kewa Kirin with their community attitude. I think it will be game-changing to fill this park up over the next 20 years as they grow with companies just like them. But in particular, part of what we love about the Brickyard, you can get a little better idea of where it started here and we'll show and walk through some of the amenities that we'll create right around it. But this does exactly the same as we did in Holly Springs, really highlighting why people want to be here in Sanford with their companies, why it's so well-centered in the region to grow with infrastructure as well as with the people and the talent really deserve it. Because we can have as many pipes in the ground as you want, but it's having the quality population and the talent to actually run those processes that makes the huge difference. So we have to be in the right communities that are already situated for that. And Sanford very much is one of those. So multiple different options and sizing, this allows us to attract large and small companies, service, you know, smaller local companies that are looking to expand as well. There's different opportunities on the site for anything from a 10,000-square-foot building to a million-square-foot building. And that leads to again, that very diverse industry group that ends up being far more sustainable for the communities that, that we join and we come into. This is a quick look at the main entrance. We'll see in the next video how far we've come. This was taken approximately a year and a half ago, just before Kewa started their work and actually before Kewa had announced that they were joining the community. And there directly to the right, we'd be looking back over Hawkins Avenue in Pfizer. But what they came for and what we are looking to create are, are the amenities within the park as well. Kewa in particular told us that they, they weren't so much looking for just the right piece of land at the right price for where they sort of thought they wanted to be. They wanted to be part of a community and they wanted that community to be the place their employees wanted to live and work. But then while they were working, it was a community of businesses to support them, looking for different suppliers called Storage Group to support their manufacturing efforts as well as different-sized companies for their employees to, to interact with. And what really causes that interaction is the creation of the amenities around the space. We found once, once employees really love the space they work, they don't want to leave those companies. At worst, they would flip from company A to company B in the same park because all their friends are on the baseball team or playing softball or they're the ones that they're enjoying a cup of coffee with. It's some of the retail nodes that we hope to reprogram into Hawkins Avenue. In particular, what we're very proud of with this is coordination with the Northview Deep River Optimist Club. Talking with Mike Gaster and Scott Holt when we first initially met them, we were just looking for another way to get an entry to Hawkins Avenue for the safety of employees eventually coming into the park. We found out really how much involvement, how much dedication they had, they had spent over the last year in the community. They had maybe $1,500 in, in the operating account and Mike was out on the lawnmower at Monday at 8:00 AM in the 90-degree heat in July when we first met because there, there wasn't a budget to do that. But those, those baseball fields were so important. He just glowed when he was talking about the, the World, the Little League World Series team that had been there just a few years before. And we realized, hey, you know, we don't want you guys to go anywhere. The amenities are part of what make our parks unique and it's not something we're good at managing. How can we partner to make this work? Ended up purchasing their, purchasing their land, which gave them the budget to do the base improvements they needed now. And they have further commitment from us. What we'll do is once that area is developed, we have another company planned to come in, which we don't yet, but when we do, we will start building new facilities on the backside of the park, which is farther away from Hawkins. One of the things that Mike explained to us too is they had a lot of traffic incidents out front. It was very difficult with young kids' baseball programs, parents driving in and out constantly trying to get on Hawkins from just a dirt driveway. We're going to improve that with the circulation roads, but it just seemed like such a better idea, why don't we go build new facilities on the other side of the park? We're coming off Iron Curtain Road. You can still access on the main drive and get back to Hawkins very easily, but with organized lit intersection. Everything that we started talking about made more and more sense. So the plan will be to redevelop the park on the other side, creating new baseball fields, soccer fields, basketball, and if I get my way, pickleball too. And what we'll do is the Optimist Club will continue to own and operate the facility. They'll have new revenue stream because the companies within the park will have the right to rent those facilities. They'll pay for that right to rent the facilities. So it will be a symbiotic relationship to ensure the Optimist Club has, one, wonderful facilities for the community going forward, but also a way to sustainably grow and sustainably maintain those facilities long into the future. And I think I'd speak for Jay as well as the, the whole group at Helix that this is one of the best things that we've come up with. And it's just sitting down and talking to people about what makes sense for the park, what makes sense for the community. And we're thrilled that projects like ours could be involved with that and really be an integral part of it. We can include what our community is and integrate it into what your community has always been and, and hopefully we'll grow together in the future into something even better. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that one in particular. It's, it's one of the things we like best. Now just taking a, a quick look at the current progress and what this now. We took this video from one of the companies that we just started talking to. We end up talking with, through Saga, Crystal and, and her group, and Jimmy knows me very well. We coordinate with them. We, we're not saying, hey, we know what companies we want to put here. We work with Saga and we work with EDPNC to find the right fits for the community. And we go, go through Crystal and Jimmy and Todd's guidance on what fits best for the Sanford community and we try to make it work on our parks in all ways. And this was a video we created for one we talked to literally last week and are very excited to say that they were impacted by the video. We'll see how we do. These things are usually an 18-month cycle before we know anything. But I thought this is, this is footage literally from two weeks ago about what the site looks like now. So this is the Kewa site. They began work in late October and by began work, I mean, they started putting up a little fence and talking about doing some clearing. That's where they're at now with a foundation and circulation in place. They have the lay-down yard and everything put together where the eventual parking lot will be. This is just phase one. Be about a 240,000-square-foot facility for creating really base medicine for rare disease. And it's going to be a, a real game changer for their manufacturing and for the patients around the world. This is looking up at the next pod, hopefully that will have some attention for, another 100 acres that could really house a, a company just like Kewa. And that's looking up the next road that will connect. So we have multiple connections onto Hawkins to provide really for safe travel and safe interaction of traffic, including a main spine road. We've partnered with the city of Sanford to run a force main through there to actually increase the infrastructure capacity for the whole region. Again, not just for our park, for the whole region. And we're happy that we've been able to coordinate so well with Sanford going forward. That's a little bit about the Brickyard and we continue to work here. We love Sanford. As Commissioner Reeves know, we were able to work with the Raleigh Executive Jetport to help coordinate with some of their expansion and are hoping to create another park along the rail system that's near the Raleigh Executive Jetport. That's already picked out on the San Lee Plan for light industrial uses. Still got a lot of, lot of work to figure out how to make this work, but trying to create some of the infrastructure that's needed throughout the area, working with CEMC to create an electrical substation they've needed for years there as well. We're happy that, that even the start of this project can be a catalyst for something to help that side of our community as well. So many things to come, a lot of work to do before this sees any work, but we hope to have this as the next step in, in our long commitment to Lee County and just enjoy being here. So I appreciate having the opportunity to tell you a little bit about ourselves and what we do and hopefully I'll see you again.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Keener. Commissioner Martin.
I don't have any questions. That was a great visual and information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovett.
Just to comment, a great presentation, but it's neat to see some of the old things that we thought had gone by the wayside, the old meal houses and stuff like that, getting the houses back around business.
Absolutely.
So it's an old concept, but a newer idea of it. Thank you for that.
But we actually have the, the former firehouse right next to Amgen was a former farmhouse, very small, but we actually just renovated that so we can do our site visits there. Love to be able to do something similar here as well.
Great. Thank you so much, Kevin. Commissioner Connect.
Thank you. I'd like to invite you back for updates in the future.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borbeck.
My only questions were the current fields that Optimist uses for baseball and soccer and stuff. One of those, what's the like ETA on when those will not be able to be used? Was this last season farm or?
No, not at all. I tried to say in the presentation, pardon me if it was unclear. We won't touch those fields until a company comes and commits and says, hey, that's where we need to be. And so we'll coordinate with Mike and Scott to make sure that we start building the new fields well in advance of that. Most of these facilities you'll see usually take about a year worth of planning plus another two years to build out. That leaves you a good amount of time to transition over and that's the plan.
No, it does. That's good to know. I didn't, I didn't, for some reason I had heard a, a different, that the fields weren't going to be able to be used.
No, ma'am. I, hopefully we can do without interrupting any of the programs and transition it over nicely. That's the plan.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Reeves.
I think both of you will come into Lee County.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation and your, and your interest and willingness to get involved with the community.
No, absolutely. That's what, that's what we do. We're part of this and we're thankful that you welcomed us here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
We'll see you again. Take care.
And before you go, just wanted to point out, we have a really good athletic park that's coming that.
I've, I've heard of that. I had a couple of Saga meetings, once or twice.
There's a, there's a couple pages of, you know, sponsorship opportunities to just, you know, just throwing that out there.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. I'm going to take the privilege of taking a 10-minute break and put the timer up there. So we will recess for 10 minutes. On to old business. We do not have 5A, but we do have 5B, so Amy McNeil, take it away, young lady.
Good evening, everyone. This information is on pages 155 through 163 of your agenda packet, and there's a map of the subject property on page 153 to refresh your memory regarding the location. The planning board met on April 21st after the public hearing was held and recommended by unanimous vote that the commissioners approve the request to rezone a 0.24-acre portion of a five-acre tract of land adjoining metal impressions at 3313 Hawkins Avenue from residential agricultural to highway commercial to allow expansion of the existing business. In making this recommendation, the board expressed that the request is reasonable because the site is frontage on Hawkins Avenue and has HC zoning to the north and south of it, both on the same parcel and the adjoining parcels. The board also voted that the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan Sand Lee Long Range Land Use Plan, but they noted a statement to the motion that stated that the site is not conducive to residential development. Topics of discussion included the following. The subject property was once its own lot because the property lines were eliminated when it was recombined into the adjoining lot to create the new 1.5-acre lot. The site is along a four-lane section of Hawkins Avenue across from the entrance of Pfizer. It makes sense to put a business at this location and not residential development. It is simply cleaning up the zoning to allow the expansion of an existing business that appears to be well-maintained. Therefore, it makes sense to rezone the site. As a reminder, the commissioners should make two votes regarding the matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference. Commissioners are always free to welcome a draft of a unique motion, if preferred. Also, the commissioners may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan Sand Lee Long Range Land Use Plan and still vote to approve the request. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Sharp.
I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thanks.
Seeing no questions, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to, um...
Option two.
Yeah, option two, but I do like to make note of what the planning board did state. I know I'm probably making more of an option three, that it's not consistent with the Plan Sand Lee, but that the caveat that the planning board stated where it makes a lot more sense because a residential part couldn't go there and it would make it...
It's not conducive.
It makes it more cohesive as a unit altogether. Okay?
So, your motion number two is that the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan Sand Lee land use designation of countryside because this place type does not include commercial zoning or land uses. Should that say countryside? That's in the county, isn't it?
But you wanted that for the record, right?
Yeah.
Makes sure.
Motion been made. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. One more motion?
Motion to approve, moving the motion number one, so approve the proposed zoning map amendment from RA to HC because it's reasonable on the side frontage of Hawkins Avenue and has, yeah, all of that stuff.
All right. Motion been made that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed zoning map amendment from residential agricultural to highway commercial because it is reasonable, because the site has frontage on Hawkins Avenue and has HC zoning to the north and south of it, both on the same parcel and adjoining parcels. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is the ARPA Revenue Loss Home Repair Funding Request.
Yes, sir. As you may remember, you heard this request on April 21st, and it received a 3-3 vote then. But just as a refresher, in fiscal year 2022, after we received ARPA funds and had the option of the revenue loss funds, the Board of Commissioners chose to participate with the city in doing a home repair program similar to the state's urgent repair program. The county committed $250,000 from its ARPA revenue loss dollars. Based on information provided by the Preserving Homes Group that is assisting with the current project, they feel like they can complete all the houses that have applied and qualified for the program if the city and the county each contribute another $125,000. The city has already approved their 125, and we have been asked to consider $125,000. We do have funds left in our revenue loss fund, funds that would cover this, and so we're, we've been asked to allocate that additional $125,000.
Questions for Lisa. Commissioner Martin?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
Did you, I understand you to say we do have the funds?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Seeing no questions.
No, there's, I mean, those funds can be used for a lot of different things, not just for this, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we have a big CIP.
Not really.
Well, future CIP. Attention.
Motion to approve.
Motion been made to approve the city of Sanford's request of $125,000 to the home repair program that was funded equally by the city and county from ARPA revenue loss funds, if approved. Oh, yeah. And I'm chaired, I, the chair, will be authorized to sign the amendment with the MOU with the city. Any further discussion?
Hold over the motion. I didn't hear it.
I did.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No? Can I have a show of hands on no, please? Thank you. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? All right, moving right along.
I'm just, excuse me, I'm just curious, why would you not want to provide that service to your taxpayer?
I'd prefer not answering at this moment.
Okay.
I can confide with you.
I wasn't asking you. I'm asking anybody that voted no. I'm just saying.
Well, I think, you know what, we had a particular budget for it, and I think we were generous with that budget. I just feel there's other uses for it, and we can use that money for a lot of other things, maybe even fix a chiller here or do other improvements that we have on our table as well. That's the only thing.
It just puzzles me that in order to qualify, you have to be covering on all your taxes. And why would you deny a taxpayer? You say you look out for taxpayers, and then you deny them.
There's more to it. I will communicate with you personally.
All right. That's fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Next item on the agenda is new business, the fiscal year 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, sir. You have before you, on your, at your spot, the adjusted plan based on the actions that were taken at the work session on Friday. So, that's been presented to you, and we asking that you adopt the resolution that's on page 172 of your agenda package, authorizing us to move ahead with the capital improvements plan if you so approve that tonight.
Questions for Lisa. Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Based on the manager recommended projects and the adjusted plan from what we've represented Friday morning, by not keeping the majority of these things on, do you, does that set departments and staff that from being able to plan for projected futures?
It actually directs us as to what you do not want us to be working on, correct?
Okay. Um, no, I mean, I don't, my questions really aren't, I don't have any questions for the manager. You and staff gave recommendations, so I think the guidance was there. I guess my more questions are directed at the rest of the commissioners. But no, I don't have any more questions towards you. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No questions. Thanks.
I have a motion to approve the resolution for the capital improvements plan for 2026 through 2020, excuse me, 2030.
Motion approved.
Motion's been made to approve the capital improvement plan for fiscal 2026 to fiscal year 2030. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
No.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Moving right along. The manager has some items that she wishes to discuss.
Yes, sir. This afternoon, right at, right before we were getting ready to come over here at 4:13, I received an email from the state North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs. If you may remember, I think it was back in March, we brought you a grant application to that division for, in hopes of a $20,000 grant. We received notification this afternoon that we have been awarded $18,288.98. We will be using that to assist with salaries and benefits of our veterans officers. We have to sign the contract by Wednesday and have it back to them, so I am asking permission from you to be able to sign that grant agreement once staff has thoroughly vetted it.
Questions for Lisa. Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, you need the motion on that.
Motion? You making the motion?
Yes.
To accept the $18,288.98 to assist the Veteran Services Office and allow the manager to sign the contract?
Yes, sir.
Motion's been read. Questions? Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp? Seeing none, motion's been made, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. Commissioner comments? We'll start with Commissioner Sharp.
Um, there's a lot going on, coming up real quick here with, you know, you've got strawberry festivals and all that. Just want to remind everybody to come out and support that if you can, and... And I truly do appreciate the helix, Mr... Can't remember his name, John, but... Their involvement here in the... Show a real interest in getting in our community. It means a lot to me, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, I would like to know, in the inner local meeting, if there's been any more discussions on the River Birch, River Birch project.
No, sir. We still haven't gotten any final word. I'm looking at Jimmy. I know he gave me an update a couple of weeks ago when we were still in limbo, and we are still, apparently still in limbo, waiting to hear back from the companies and the developer.
With the board's permission, I'd like to ask the Chair of SAGA to address the issue while he's here. Mr. Randolph?
Mr. Randolph, you're available.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Commissioner. As the manager said, Commissioner Reeves, we are still waiting to hear back from the developer. They have had further conversations with the potential tenants that we had discussed. They were very appreciative of the effort that this board and the city put forward to potentially help with the redevelopment of River Birch. And we are in a situation where they've had multiple additional communications with possible tenants, and they cited specifically some of the uncertainty created by some of the macroeconomic impacts of what's happening at the federal level as something that's just slowed down the conversation. I was anticipating a much quicker decision, frankly, from the information that I shared with them, with your permission, and we are still waiting for them to potentially come to some sort of agreement. I wish I had, you know, more to share with you, but at this point, they are still in conversation. There has not been a negative... There has not been a definitive response to what I've shared with them at this point. But those delays, I trust them on that, that the economics have changed somewhat in a number of ways that you may have followed in the, you know, in the media since the time that we met to discuss the possibilities of the redevelopment of River Birch. So just still awaiting further communication from the developers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vorbeck? Thank you, Jimmy.
Uh, yes, and I guess some of my questions are mainly about the CIP because I'm just trying to wrap my head around wiping an entire five-year plan clean. I know for myself, if I didn't have a five-year plan, I wouldn't really know what I was doing with my life, but... As an example, in last year's capital improvement plan for 2025-2029, the jail and law enforcement center for fiscal year 25-26 was at $65 million. This new CIP was put on fiscal year 27-28, went to $91 million. So in a year, it jumped almost 30 million. And then it got pushed from 2026 to 2027 out to, not on here, but fiscal year 30-31 with an estimated over $99 million. So by putting some of these projects, the discussion that was held on Friday was talking about not raising taxpayers' money, and I can commend that effort. My worry on pushing some of these things back is it's not going to matter on if, it's when you have to increase taxes to cover a 40-, $50 million project that if was done years prior would cost less. And so then my only other statement is, I think by making the decision to direct staff to remove all of the capital improvement projects from the CIP for fiscal 20-year, fiscal year 2026, 2027, and beyond, while I can't speak for the rationale of the fellow commissioners, I can speak from my own perspective and from a deep sense of responsibility to the people of the county. I believe this decision represents a significant setback in our long-term planning efforts. Rather than working through each proposed projects and evaluating their feasibility, cost-effectiveness, alignment with community priorities, the board opted to lay almost everything. My view, this was a missed opportunity to have the tough, necessary conversations about how we prioritize investments in our county's future. We had spent over an hour engaged in what I believe to be one of the more productive discussions we've had in the past two years, yet instead of continuing that momentum, we stopped short. The decision felt like a seven-year pause, an overly cautious response that ultimately shifts accountability beyond the current board's terms. I understand and respect the concern about not increasing taxes. Like many of you, I live within the county and the city, and I feel the same financial pressures. I'm raising four children, and I know firsthand how far a dollar must stretch. By deferring long-term infrastructure and development projects, especially those directly supporting our education, workforce development, and community services, won't put money in residents' pockets today. It will only delay progress, weaken our future readiness, and create gaps between the services our community needs and what we actually provide. This decision not only sends confusing messages to the departments and residents who participated in shaping last year's CIP. Projects that were once prioritized are now effectively off the table. Departments have been told to find money elsewhere. Despite already working tirelessly to seek alternative funding, apply for grants, and stretch every available dollar. These are the same public servants who also live here, pay taxes here, and care deeply about the community. We need to be honest with ourselves and our constituents. The CIP we approved last year holds little weight now. That undermines not only the plan, but the trust our residents place in us to follow through. To be clear, I recognize the legal distinctions between needs and wants. I also know that definitions can vary depending on perspective. I welcome those differences of opinion and believe they're a healthy and democratic process, but what I cannot support are decisions that ignore the long-term consequences and places our community at a disadvantage for years to come. My commitment remains to advocate for transparent planning, fiscal responsibility, investments that serve not just today's needs, but tomorrow's opportunities. And I would love for us as a board to continue having the harder conversations instead of punting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Connect?
I'd like to, if the board pleases, I'd like to direct the board to, or not the board, I'm sorry, staff to look at some... I think the school is looking at... The school board is looking at certain schools that they maybe have a potential to expand on, which is great. But some of these areas have the land, but due to septic, they can't be used for expansion. So I'd like to see which ones those are, and then we'll get to letter to our representatives to see if we can find funding to... They did that area recently in a local school. Why can't we do it for some of the others to find whether we can get sewer to those areas to free up the septic fields? So they'll be able to expand on site. I think that would help the school board and save a lot of money for future expansion needs.
Is that a motion?
If it needs one, I would like to direct staff, so if it's a motion, yes, please.
Does it need one manager?
No.
No?
No, thank you. No, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lovick?
Uh, no comments, I'm good tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Now, we have a couple of meetings planned for this month to go over budgets. Again, go over budgets. I would like to just put out there that it would be helpful if we could at least have one of them in the evening or earlier in the morning rather than starting at nine. It's also helpful to know two weeks ahead of time what we're going to do so that we can, those of us who work, can put that request in. Thank you.
That can be done.
Appreciate it.
Do we have the dates on those meetings?
The only date that's built into the calendar when you adopted it back in January was May 30th.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And we've not set a time at this point, so it will be up to the board as long with who you want to bring in for those meetings. I will have a list for you, May 19th, of what I think you'll put, who you potentially want to hear from. But of course, it's always your option. You can always have the option to make every department come in, or we can choose, and agencies. I mean, you'll have, you need to decide if you want the community college or the schools to come in and do any sort of presentation for you.
You said meetings, then I was like, did I miss something?
Well, they're going, we're going to meet. I'm just going to throw out there, just in conversation, I'm... I think we should seriously consider listening to the school board's presentation, the totality of their presentation, so that we can have, start the year off with a with a communicative meeting rather than a one-sided response. And have we had any movement? Can you catch us up, please, Lisa, on where we are with that five-on-five? Where we're at in that process?
At this point, there... The R Board has not made a motion to have a five-on-five. They, what the board directed me to do was to meet with Chris, and we have met the first time.
Okay.
And had that one meeting. We have not addressed the next meeting because of budgets going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, just a few notes I have. Last week, we held the Sharon Harris Nuclear Plant Exercise. I want to say thank you for accepting my text messages to keep you up to date as we were moving along. If this was to be real, they would be real and you'd be notified. Unfortunately, the number of plant exercises I've been through and the staff that was with me, that was the most boring and dull that I have ever engaged in. But we were ahead of ourselves, we were ahead of our peers up the road, so we had done the emergency declaration and did some initiation of other actions that were supposed to happen. The FEMA staff was there, and I did mention it when I shared with you all that they were quite impressed on how, one, I happen to be only elected leader that this guy has seen in hundreds of these presentations, and I was like, you've got to be kidding me. So I take it seriously, and I will continue to take it seriously. Got to visit the Central Carolina Academy Principal Greg Batten, and I spoke to the student in government class, a very interesting bunch. They hit me with a lot of hard questions. The inner local board we had with the county and city was last week. And again, the farmer's market is a great place to go. I have gotten my wife so hooked on it, she's got to go every Saturday morning. Whereas before, she wasn't into it because she's not a morning person, as the clerk can attest to. And you've seen her there, haven't you? I have nothing further?
I have a motion to adjourn, but I also have a second part of my comments that I couldn't find when I was making them. I want to ask the committee that meets with the city, are you all discussing by any chance coverage for law enforcement and fire with all the annexations that are taking place?
We do not.
I somehow feel like that's a very important piece that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Should we have that on our list?
I'll move to adjourn.
Commissioner Reeves makes a great point, and I would even suggest that, you know, we try to communicate and then have a follow-up and let us know if they, if they have any talks or what they're thinking about maybe next, next meeting.
So do we want to go ahead and schedule a meeting with them to be able to discuss that?
I would say yes.
I don't think we need to. If you, if they have a plan, just let us know what it is. You know, are they coming up with a plan on how to address the concerns that Commissioner Reeves has?
I think that also has to do with the 911 system, when they dispatch the calls, who do they dispatch? And is the staff attuned to which is city and which is county?
Do they have the staffing to cover those areas, all that kind of stuff?
Just as a refresher, who's on that committee now?
Myself, Commissioner Lovick, and Commissioner Connect.
Good.
And then you had a motion to adjourn?
Sure did.
Motion. Motion to adjourn has been made, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding.